And see.
Was that it?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I guess everything else is captured here. I mean, this could be further compartmentalized.
Right, so we would, we would actually go to the detail and then bring that back to you.
Right, so I see that, but pretty much, I mean.
You need to have, there's a little bit of overlap. Number four, channels of communication with board and stakeholders. And then number six, increased transparency to the public.
Right, like that'll fit together to make a library.
You know, within the transparency case could fall under that category. So these are just some buckets.
My feedback on this part was, first of all, I love these. I appreciate the work that you both did in bringing us this from the feedback we gave you. I would love to see a part of, I mean, recruiting quality educators. I think that includes the accountability piece and all the things. But do, when we say educators, does that include site leaders? Does that encompass site leaders?
Yes, it does.
Okay, okay, just wanted to clarify that, okay. And then I also wanna, I'm excited to hear the measurable outcomes that come from each one of these, obviously. But I think that this is a good space. I would love to see something, though. Like, I don't know if that's included into one, the reclassification of English language learners. I don't know if that's encompassing one.
I think that could be in one.
I think so, too.
The lag measure for number one could be.
It would be a lag measure.
Like, increase, let's say your increased reclassification rates by 10%.
Yep. That would absolutely be included in number one.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so if I could expand on you, like, talking about, like, I see a broader HR function. Like, to me, the big envelope is your human resources function in general. How does that office work? Is that office geared to set us up for the future? To me, contract and labor negotiations falls under that, as well as staffing matrix on the, on the site level. Because it's all the people that deliver the work. So I see this, like, I see these, like, bigger envelopes where these things can kind of fall under if that kind of makes some sense.
Yeah, it kind of goes to the conversation we had a few months back about evaluation, right? Where this would be the goals, and then we'll have the, the standards and the measurable objectives which come after this, which has that stuff, that stuff.
Yeah, so I see these, like, big buckets and then, you know, like, some really big building blocks under those two.
Yeah, I'm trying, I didn't bring the evaluation document, but I think there was some wording in there about, it was more like systems and structures in HR, but, you know, there was some customer service. I don't remember if that word was used or not, I apologize, but it was more than just recruitment and retention. Because recruitment and retention was a fallout of it, was there were all these unfilled positions or some, was, am I remembering it?
Yeah, so it's like, what do we need to be this destination district to work, lead, teach, and learn? What, what is that? And then what are the people, like, how do we attract them? How do we retain them? Do we have the right people in the right spaces to do that? What are the skill sets that we need to do that? Like, like, it, it all falls down from that. So it's like a much bigger, broader envelope, if that, if that makes any sense.
So potentially work on it in lieu of number eight, which would be a subset or, yeah.
Yeah, to me, eight is a subset under.
An HR, a more global HR-related goal.
There needs to be a strategic conversation about where are we headed? What are we gonna deliver? What do we need to deliver? What do we want to deliver? And then what do we need inside of that? And then how do we attract and retain it and nurture it and grow it? And, you know, and then there's a whole compensation discussion under that. There's a on-the-ground staffing matrix discussion on that. Like, how are we supporting, you know, through, and we are all people, that is, all this is. You know, so to me, that's.
Like, improving the functionality of HR would be more like the overarching.
Correct, correct. And looking at it very, in a very visionary way, but then boiling it down to the supports.
Got you.
And there's some lead and lag measures, lag measure, reduce the number of vacant duties by X percent. Or by June, you know, September, so there could be ways that you can measure it, because I know that was, that's been a big concern.
But it needs to be intentional. I think that one of the things that I don't want to slip by, and Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy touched on this, there's intentionality that needs to go into serving this district. We have disproportionality. We have particular subgroups that have to have the intentionality and the focus on them for them to be able to succeed. And I think that if we give this kind of, if we stay in this kind of all, instead of being very intentional, then we are only going to serve a certain number of people in the district. And I think that when we do these lead and lag and all of this thing, there has to be intentionality behind it. So if you're saying recruit and retain, recruit and retain teachers that are representative of the student population that they teach. That is very specific. And it also has a level of accountability to it, not just fill spaces, not just put bodies in the room. But if we're trying to increase success, then we have to do it based on what we know to be true. And what we know to be true, that if students have black female teachers in front of them, all student success increases, right? We know that, that's data, that is proven fact to be true. We know that if students have the ability to have a relationship with the teachers in front of them, whether they are, they speak the same language, whether they have some of the same cultures, whatever it is, we know that that increases, that increases their investment in it all, right? So when we talk about this, I want us to be intentional about what we say and how we say. When we're talking about safety, Dr. Hurst, when it says implement and monitor a safety plan, well, what does that look like for such a large district, right? We have heard from many of our students and many of our teachers that they would like to have CSSs and CS fours and CS twos and ones and et cetera, who are able to have communication with them in their home language. So are we hiring tutors for our CSSs, right? Or are we recruiting CSSs that speak multiple languages? Like, what is the intentionality behind all of that? Not just saying it, but how are we digging deeper into it? And that's the part for me, that when I'm looking at these overarching goals, I'm looking at them with the hope that you have very clear intentionality behind what is it gonna mean? Because when I look at number two, and this is just an example, ensure all students develop habits, behaviors that elevate voice, agency, and empowerment in a caring environment. What if they don't have a caring environment? We still want them to elevate their voice and their agency and their empowerment. Like, we still, see, we have to be careful about the privilege that we put into the writing, because then we're gonna turn around and only have that as a measurable outcome, right? There are students who do not have caring environments. As much, we have a huge district, and if we don't think that there are some sites and some schools and some whatever that doesn't care for our students, then we're fooling ourselves. We need to create caring environments all over the district, but that's not what this says, right? This says for those students who are in a caring environment, that they will have elevated voice, develop habits and behaviors and agencies around that. So again, this is just some of the things that when your team is bringing it back to us, to be very intentional and clear about that. That's why I'm saying the more conversation we have with each other and others, we will be able to pick up on these things. I'm complete.
I would just, one, this is, I appreciate the conversation. It provides clarity for me as I go back to the team. I would appreciate it if we can go through each one, just like you were just sharing right there, Trustee Smithfold. And it would give me some clarity as well.
Is the board in agreement with that? So we just kind of go down, you know, see if there's some general consensus that this is a big enough overarching goal or tweaking it, that the board is supportive of that.
It was helpful for me to hear even for number eight, that, that would be a subset. And we would need, like, an overarching goal, like, improve the, improve the functionality of HR, whatever that goal is gonna be. So I would need to hear that specificity from, from the board as we go through each one.
Okay, then let's, let's do that, and thank you for that, for the Smithfolds. And then, yes, and jump in, you know, we'll start, we'll try to go in order, but we may skip around because you may see some blending again that we could do like we just did with the HR one. So number, goal one was to ensure all students make steady progress toward literacy and numeracy by third grade. So that's one of your LCAP goals, I believe, too? That's one of your primary, you know, that's one of your academical, you know, key academical. So I'm assuming, Dr. Hurst, that's where that emerged.
It is. And what I understand also, that a lag measure would be, or could be, like, the percentage of students who are reclassified, or even percentage of special needs students as well that are graduating, improving graduation rate for those students as well. So I understand that we would have the responsibility to bring back those type of lag measures to the board.
And African-American students here, Dr. Hurst, is huge. Like, this is the beginning and the foundational part of an achievement gap.
Can I ask a question on what we're asking right now? How detailed do we want to be at this moment on those things? Because I can, I can definitely give you measurable outcomes right now, but, like, how detailed do you want us to be?
I, I think for me, I think we would come back with the lag measures or the, the indicators. I think for me, I just want clarity on the overarching goal, like, what that should be. But it's helpful for me to, like, hear little tidbits as well, like, make sure you include African-American students in the lag measure. Make sure we include, you know, these students, make sure we include. So that's helpful as well, even though you're not detailing what that lag measure is. It's helpful me to just kind of hear those tidbits.
Is there consensus on that first goal, you know, having an academic goal and really focusing on literacy?
Absolutely. And literacy, I'm gonna make the math people mad, but literacy over numeracy, and I know the math people are. But really, if, if you can't, if, you know, that, that's the most potent indicator is literacy. We know for life outcomes, so.
Does the board have consensus on that, or just focusing that first goal on literacy, progress toward literacy by third grade?
I mean, I like that the focus needs to be literacy, I'd say that has to be a little bit of both, just because for our district used to be that math, we were doing much better than in literacy. But now, unfortunately, we are doing just as poorly in math, if not worse in certain instances. So I think there has to be a mention of it. Although, I think that we, maybe we gotta share whether or not we agree with what Trustee Smithfold said, because she talked about a focus, one of the measurable outcomes are, what'd you call them?
Lag measures.
Being focused on African-American students.
Right, that's be some of the breakdown, African-American, I have English learners.
And that, I mean, I think that those three.
Yeah, you'd have subgroups specifically.
But it's for all kids, I mean.
Yeah, of course.
You know. You can dig through all the subdata and.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's.
So I'm hearing.
All students, all means all.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm hearing from Demetra, maybe keeping numeracy in. Jamila, how do you feel about?
I think that you have to keep numeracy in there, of course, because we went, when we went to Kennedy and the shop teacher, I'm sorry, the, the welding teacher was telling us that students don't know how to read a ruler, right? Like, they don't have mathematical literacy, right? If, for lack of a better term, they don't know how to use the language of math successfully. And I think that that's what we're talking about, is how do you understand and use the language of math? Every discipline has a language to it. This is, we're talking about the language of math, we're talking about the language of reading and comprehending and being able to, you know, understand material in front of you. What do they say by third grade? You're not learning to read, but reading to learn, right? So that's in all the fields that they're learning, reading to learn. I think that we have to be, again, clear, we, when we talk about the subgroups, we're talking about all students, right? Because our, our special ed students are our mainstream students first, right? That's what, that's what we say, but there are special needs that go into that. Our African-American students are all students, but they have been so left behind that we have to make sure that there's a targeted response to them. Our, our English as a second language students, again, have been so left behind that we have to have targeted responses. So when we see the lead and the lag, they have to be targeted, like, they have to be targeted. Once those groups rise, all groups rise. Do you understand? But we have to understand the bell of the bell curve. We have to be able to be intentional about what we're doing and how we're doing it. I would vote to keep nu- numeracy in there for sure, literacy and numeracy.
How do you feel, O three, about literacy and numeracy and number one, keeping both of those core, the core academic areas?
I agree.
Focus on that by third grade.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's needed. I mean, because if we don't, then. Yeah, I'm in agreement with Trustee Smithfold saying.
How about you, Leslie, keeping numeracy and literacy?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it. The principles that I've observed that we're doing, keeping literacy work, they die out of the sideline now.
So maybe it isn't one that is a board goal, so that, they're both important. Okay. So, Dr. Hurst, do you have enough, and you've got something you have to be able to.
I have also, for us to think about the lag measures as well, all means all, but really, English learners, special needs, African-American students.
And what generally, I imagine you'll do, you look at the data by subgroups, and let's say EL reclassification, just making this number up, was 25%. You probably aren't gonna, you want a stretch goal, a goal that causes you to stretch but not break. And so making that to 50% by next year isn't realistic. But maybe if your special ed students are in the 35%, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and that's what our responsibility is, to bring that metric back to all of you to let you know what our, our goal is. And coming from excellent data or whatever.
Right, okay.
And, Dr. Hurst, when you do, for me, words matter. So steady progress, that should be defined, just, if you just need to define it to me. But what does steady progress towards literacy and numeracy by third grade mean? Does that mean that there's a point at kindergarten? There's a point at first grade, and then there's a point at second grade, because then by third grade, right? And then, also have a question about what happens after third grade? What do we do for those sixth graders who are reading at a third grade level, right? What are we, what's beyond? I know that our goal is to hit everybody by third grade, but there also has to be some kind of measures in there about those who are past that, that how do you do that? How do you fill in that kind of gap that was created because this goal wasn't done before, right? So I just want to bring that to your attention, that that's very important to me, because there's a great number of people in our district that are not in third grade, right? We have fourth graders, fifth graders own up, all the way to adult ed. What are we doing for that goal, too? We are more than just TK through 12. We are TK through adult ed, transition, et cetera. So some of these goals, I, I'm trying to find the whole of WCCUSD in these goals, right? I'm looking for the entire WCCUSD inside of these goals, and that's TK all the way.
Good point.
So that, you know.
Yeah, I, I captured that.
I mean, if you.
Or it doesn't have to be that, it could be.
It could be graduation.
Sure all students make progress toward literacy and numeracy without the, the grade level, and then that's defined, you know, by the lag measures.
I see, Trustee Smithfold shaking her head yes.
I don't know if I agree with that 100%, because I do think we have to have a focus on third grade, because obviously every study that you have.
Yeah, yeah.
Says that, if that's the focus, that's a long term, right? I think that if we create another one around A through G requirements and CTE, or something like that to encompass, like, I, maybe A through G would support the whole child, obviously, after third grade, or graduation. I think graduation's honestly not as rigorous as A through G, to be honest. But, but I'm just cautionous that we don't want to make 100 things our focus, right? Every single piece is important, don't get me wrong. Of course, I want our sixth graders to succeed, of course, I want adults' students to succeed. But I do think that this is a rabbit hole that I see in every district, that we put in 100 measurable outcomes, and none of them happen because we didn't focus on our top five, our top nine, right, of, of everything. But I totally agree, wanting to, of course, make a statement, symbolism around the whole child. So maybe A through G, or success, or a pathway for success after high school. Whatever that looks like, I'm totally okay with that, I'm not disagreeing with that. But, so, just, just a word of caution.
I think it's a both and, Demetra. I agree with you that third grade is a key marker, right? It is a marker in success, we know that to be true. I think that it can be a both and, right? I think that you can keep the grade, third grade, right? But I think in your lead lag, Dr. Hurst, it, what, whenever, if you're not creating another goal inside of this lead lag, you always have to remember that we are, we are more than a K-12 district, right? We have so many other things inside of our district that we gotta chew gum and walk, right? We have to be able to do that at the same time, inside of that district, I mean, inside of that goal, right? So it's just one of those things that, when you talk about this goal, you're not leaving out those have, who are now sixth grade and still deserve to have progress towards literacy, right? And still, because literacy is a goal that we have.
Oh, sure.
So I, I just want to just share with you, with all of you, just kind of, so that you understand, again, the conversation. So everything that you're saying, Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy and Trustee Smithfolds, I've had these conversations. So I just want to share with you, you know, what this looks like in reality. So the conversation that I had with my team, so when I talk to Larisha, this, this is hers, and she's actually on this right now. But, so, so one of the things I caution my team on is, whenever, whenever you have too many goals, then you really can't really focus on the most important things. Like, everything is important in our district, to be honest with you. We had a lot of work, but the reason why I bought eight, I could have bought more. So when you look at this, you could see that she has, like, several goals here. And these are just the goals, these aren't the success indicators. So you could see she has students who meet A through G requirements, students who graduated from high school as well, ninth grade students on track to graduate, because that's an indicator as well, students who complete CTE. So everything that you're saying, we had this conversation. But again, what I tried to do is just to bring the most important things to you, knowing that we can't be really, really good at everything. So I hear you, I'm just asking us if we could, now, if you want me to create that other sub-goal under number one, we can do that and bring that back, because I hear what you're saying, focusing on, like, the whole WCCUSD and not just literacy and numeracy in third grade, what about all the other rest of the students? So we can do that, but I just want to let you know, these conversations have been had. And I just cautioned them about bringing too much to me, so I just wanted to just share that.
Yeah, it's a good point. If you don't narrow the focus, the staff will be in the whirlwind. And this, just because, and it's a great point you're bringing up, just because a goal isn't on here, like, we're gonna care about science, doesn't mean that the district isn't, you know, teaching science. But what it's saying is, your professional development resources.
Right.
Funds are gonna be, you know, as you're allocating funds, are really gonna be streamlined around.
Absolutely, these goals.
It doesn't mean you're not gonna spend money on one other thing, but it, it's helping you to prioritize. So it's great points, maybe looking at a second possible with secondary, if you can't have a sub-goal for number one, Dr. Hurst.
Well, I heard A through G.
I, I heard A through G as well, as a possible. I mean, A through G is a good indicator, in that it's on the LCAP.
That would be an indicator.
As the board to increase, and you're accountable to increase, I believe, students in the suburbs, right?
Could be.
African-American, second language learners, the percentage, you know, yeah.
I understand.
So there could be some metrics that are easy, you know, for the board to measure relative to that. So maybe a, a number two, now, the current number two, I'm just gonna put that as like a two-way. The current number two, oh, and what about, Jamila's point about steady? Do we need the word steady in there?
I wrote that down, I, I, I don't know if we need.
We don't need the qualifier of, yeah. The less is, you know, the shorter the goal, the easier.
Because actually, that is defined by the actual metric.
The metric will define.
Number of years. So you define, like, what that progress is gonna be. So when I shared with you the, the scorecard, even from my lab system and the one that I just shared with you from Parkview, you could see how they had, typically, you have, like, some baseline data from either STAR or some other assessment. And then from that baseline data, you're setting a goal. And then you kind of walk that goal out several years and try to get to 100% proficient, you know, on STAR. So to Trustee Smithfold's point, steady progress would actually be measured by that metric year to year. So if you have first year, 20% proficiency in English Language Arts, then you look and measure and see what that goal is gonna be for next year for all students as well.
Okay, now the second line, and Trustee Smithfold brought up a point about, you know, the caring environment piece. And did this come from your evaluation, Dr. Hurst, this number two? Ensure all students develop habits, behaviors that elevate voice, agency, and empowerment? I don't, you know, what I was adding.
I don't know if I remember that specifically.
Standard around culture.
That's what it was.
Okay, so was that a culture goal?
It was.
That makes sense, it was in there. So is that, does it need to be reworded? I don't know, what's?
Well, I, I, I heard what Trustee Smithfold says, and I wrote down, you know, in all environments. So not necessarily, what if they're not in a caring environment? So are we not going to empower and elevate student voice and agency? So it has to be in all environments.
So my question is, why is it just students? Ensure that all students, what about teachers, admin, staff, employees? I'm just trying to figure out why it just says students.
So I could say, I'm not seeing, well, something bored. I've not seen a school district focus on, no, I can't say that.
Depends on, yeah, your clients are your students, I, I hear what you're saying.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, it's vicarious, maybe there's a subset in the HR goal.
I was just wondering, because our LCAP goals say about teachers, you know how LCAP goal says about, there's three LCAP goals, and one is about a caring environment for teachers or something like that? I can't quote it exactly.
Okay, I think that would fall under eight, right? Because retaining educators is not just mean pay and then more, right? It also means develop them, it also means nurture them, it also means.
Empower them.
Or, right? So I think that it would fit more there than in number two. But I guess my question would be, how would you measure this?
Yeah, let's talk about, how would you measure two without teachers in there, just with students? What do you think?
Well, my, my comment is gonna be, boy, I can't wait to see the lag and lead measures on this.
That is up to my staff to determine.
Well, you do.
So, so I do know that she actually has success indicators in here, under that. So I know that her team has thought about that.
But that one is a tough, yeah, how do you, like, the California Healthy School Kids Survey, which is school connected.
Yeah, it could be some perception survey as well, that's administered.
Yeah, like, how safe do you feel?
It's gotta be perception data, right?
Right.
I just, I'm thinking about, how am I gonna, right? I mean, on, on perceptions and stuff, I mean, we can talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe having your staff see if they can really get that out of how, because it is, if you don't have some specific metrics, it's a great goal, but it's pretty generic as far as measuring it.
But I'd like to see what you come back with, I mean, there could be some really good, you know.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, elevating voice.
Just make sure I capture this. Really, all environments, learning environment, and really, not just students, but should be a subset under eight that includes employees. Under eight that includes employees.
Dr. Hertz, for me, when it says develop habits and behaviors, right? That elevate voice, agency and empowerment. The only way to measure that is to be able to walk it out, right? You can develop a habit, but if it's not a practice habit, then it's really not a behavior. It's just something, right? So, you know, I I watch the Oakland School Board sometimes and they have. A time that's dedicated just for students to call into the board, right? They have like an hour or something that's for students to call into the board. I'm not suggesting that, but what I'm suggesting is. They're able to track the student engagement by how many people, how many students participate in their meetings, right? We have an all-student congress. We have um most of our high schools have leadership teams, most of our high schools. So if we're developing habits and behaviors that elevate voice. Do we have those? Uh systems in place to where you can hear voice, right? Are we ensuring that all high schools have a student council? All middle schools have a student council? All? High schools have a leadership team? All high schools are part of the or people are participating in the all-student congress? Are we looking at our school board trustees? Are they being represented from all of our schools, right? All of our high schools? Are we getting the same ones over and over again from the same schools? Like, there's ways that we can measure involvement and voice and empowerment, but it is setting up. It's selling, it's setting up those systems in place, right? So it's like ha- having the student trustees give reports, right, about what they have done to go out and talk to. Other students about what concerns them. Are we looking at even when the student trustees talked about our Instagram pages and our followers and all of those things? Are we ensuring that we're developing the habits of being able to have two-way communication with the district, right? Are you tracking the number of emails that you get from students? That's elevating voice. They're going straight to the person, you know, with that they see at the top. How many emails are we getting from students? How many invitations are we getting to come? To schools to listen to, to see their performances or to do, you know, to have conversations with them like. Uh trustee or president Christian set up last year when we went to the high schools to have conversations. Like, there's ways to have the league and the lag in here. But again, it's the intentionality behind it. Do? Do we have a number of clubs represented at our schools that are? Inclusive of our student body, right? Is there a BSU or double ASU? Are there? Sign languages are, you know, do we have those in place to where our schools, our students can feel like they're elevating their voice?
Yeah.
And I, it's my understanding. Graduate profile to adopt. So your graduate profile really comes in here because once you have those core dispositions. Which really it's K twelve because the kids don't just get that when they're in twelfth grade. But then you can, I know what some districts have done in a graduate profile is use certain. Um for each grade level, like how are we gonna develop communication skills? And they've. Articulated some activities that teachers will use to enhance that. So might be.
Yeah, I'm I'm I'm. Thank you all for for this feedback. I appreciate it, but I I think. What all of you have been sharing in the feedback speaks to like the importance of of us really. Crystallizing the number of goals as well. I mean, I'm listening to. Trustee Smith Folds and just the intensity of. Your response to number two. And the level of detail, you know, and making sure that the structure is in place uh for voice. Um just that goal and those the the number one goal. That's lofty for our staff and we're bringing it to you. We wanna be able to do this uh to fidelity. So again, I'll just ask as we go through these eight. If we could really, I think at the end, I would really like to have another conversation, like can we even synthesize these? Like, what's the most important? Uh for the board for me to focus on, like if I. If I'm gonna be evaluated on this, I really want to have like a a good shot of really addressing these seriously. And even all of these um are good goals. It's a lot to to evaluate me on, so. I just wanna make sure that we kinda come back and look at the total number as well.
Let's do that. Let's go through because I think we've got some ways that we can consolidate some that are up here. What I heard for number three, trusting capacity with labor partner could come into an HR goal.
Yep.
Couldn't that be a subset of a leader lag? Um so, you know, that number eight recruitment and retention quality teachers. Retention, um filling staffing positions and then also labor partners would be under a broader HR goal, Chris, and you can work with your. Team on, I heard different wording for it, but something like. You know, establishing those system structures or, you know. responsiveness in the HR department or something like that.
Yeah, some sort of like, some sort of like global HR function review. You know, like that is kinda like what I had in my mind.
Okay.
Um, you know, that that encompasses all of those parts of which. You know, enhancing trust and credibility with labor partners is of utmost importance.
I too.
Does that make sense? Are you?
He does.
With that, Jamila, too, that we combine um.
And then recruiting and retaining quality educators is actually a subset.
I think that you're gonna have to do some combinations. I think that it's just. I think that you're gonna have to do some combinations with this, but I think that. Oh, to answer your question, should three be with eight and eight be under an umbrella of HR? Probably yes.
Yeah, you're gonna have to play with wording with your team.
Yeah, I'm I'm capturing everything that everybody's saying.
And I'm writing notes too, so um so that so we've got, you know, three's gonna be encompassed with one in HR. Um how about the communication goal, number four? I know that was a big one on the evaluation. Is that a, you know, standalone priority goal for the board?
So I see opportunities to combine four and six.
Yeah, I would see that too.
In in certain ways.
Yeah, okay.
I'd wanna think about that. Like, maybe I'll just take a picture of this and.
Okay, that'll be good. Yeah.
Thinking, but I see some.
I can see those go going together.
Yeah, we kind of talked about that. So a leader lag measure may be in that increased transparency into. Um the trustee Smithfold's point earlier, getting input, that can be a three sixty, you know, community perception survey or. Focus groups. You can have focus groups with certain um folks. I mean, you can get perception data. People respond a lot.
Yeah, I think six could be a measurable uh subset from four.
Okay.
Absolutely. Effective communication includes being transparent, right? So absolutely, yeah.
And instead of increased transparency, it could be increased involvement or something like that. Transparency is a little bit vague and. I don't know, but you could work on that, doctor.
Yeah.
Okay, and then so four is its own overarching goal, a subset of some lead and lag measures about the public and partners. How about the facility goal?
Before we move on to Dr. Hertz, I would. Putting effective channels, it it has to be effective for it to work. So you don't have to have the word effective. It's just wordy. But that's just as an English teacher, it's overuse of the adjective, but um. We establish and maintain channels of communication with the board and stakeholders. Again, if you wanna put effective in there, you can, but I mean. For it to be successful, it would have to be effective, right? So it's one of those things. You don't wanna have ineffective channels. So just. That's what we have now, right? So you wanna have effective channels. I agree that six should be underneath that. Transparency and two-way communication is always important to get that feedback, the feedback loop or whatever they call it, I think is important. Um so I'm okay with putting those two together. So now you're at what, six goals if we take them?
I.
Actually have.
Are you at five? How many?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not including, so far we're at four goals.
Four goals, okay.
So far.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't counted uh safety and I haven't counted facilities yet.
Okay.
So that would be six.
So if we did, what about five that's on the list? Is that a standalone goal?
Okay, so I just wanna just kinda recap, just to make sure we're on the same page. So for one. I have ensure all students make a progress toward literacy and numeracy by the third grade. Um looking at a lag measure that considers EL, sped African Americans. And maybe a a sub uh goal under there or a separate goal. I gotta figure that one out. That really includes the other students and something around A through G. So I also, I have that all categorized as one goal.
You put that as one. I did, yeah, maybe it's a one.
It could be. We can look at that though, but I know that I've considered that. For the the next one. I have ensure um all students develop uh habits and behaviors that elevate voice. Agency and empowerment in all environments. Because it may not be a caring environment. Um and then I have um a subset. Of that would be for employees and that would go under um. The eight category, which would be revised. Eight's gonna be revised to be, yeah. Something and maybe you could work on kind of that wording with you're looking at that. I just put. For that one, improve the functionality of HR, but it could be something else. Let me know. So that's uh the second one. Uh for number three. Really, that one, ensure trust and credibility with labor partners, that would actually go under uh eight as well. That would be a subset. So and then um. Establish and maintain effective channels of communication with the board and stakeholders, so effective will be removed. And that will be actually the.
I'm counting four so far.
So you said four, I said three, so it could be four or three goals, but then go ahead.
Sorry. Trustee Smithfold, I feel a little uncomfortable taking away effective because. We have channels of communication right now. There are a lot. Some of them are very unsuccessful though, right? Or maybe unsuccessful is the wrong word. Uh they're not uh uh. Progress is the wrong word. Uh when you get ahead of something, uh.
They're not proactive.
Proactive thing like.
Right.
I feel like there has to be a word there. Maybe effective is the wrong word, but something there to show that. We're not just talking about having chance of communication with everybody. We're talking about having proactive or uh uh. Maybe I'm just concentrating too hard on.
No, I think that trustee Gonzalez, I don't think that you're wrong. It's just stylistically. It you don't need it if we're doing it correct, but I think that if we want to keep something in there to give it some kind of boundaries, right? Like, you wanna make sure that the channels you create are effective. You wanna make sure that the channels that you maintain are. Proactive or whatever. I don't know if that could be under the league lag that you're creating and establishing effective channels of communication, but. I'm okay with it staying in there. It was just something that rang to my ear. It's just like, okay, we know that we want it to be. Effective because we want it to work, right? We wouldn't, we would not set a goal of not having it effective, but I'm okay leaving it. It was just something that I brought up because it rings to my ear, right?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
See what I mean? It's like, it it's one of those things that. It's just, it's just, it can stay. I was just bringing it to the the forefront that in my, in my English teacher ear, it just rings weird to me.
Got it. Okay. I mean, I'm okay with it.
So understanding your point, those proac, you know, and I know that was an issue in the evaluation, not reactive, not waiting to communicate until after. An event has occurred. So, Dr. Hertz, I think you're, are you hearing? That, you know, the idea is, of course, it would be effective because we have a lot of community. But it's not hitting the right, you know. You want it targeted to, that might be a word, you know, because sometimes it's for a certain audience that.
Yeah, I captured all of that.
You captured that.
I heard, I heard. Oh, no, no, no.
That's good.
No, no, I'm 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 listening and just taking it in. I just wanna make sure I have everything down. Um.
Okay, so now we have um what's currently up there is number five. It was a facility goal. That's.
Correct.
Pretty different than all the other, you know, it's a standalone. So is that a standalone enough to be a priority? We were talking about the bonds at lunch today.
Yep.
How do, how do the other trustees feel about that?
Can we maybe uh dig deeper on identifying?
Okay.
I absolutely agree with trustee Gonzalez. Absolutely.
I think that I can identify what our issues are. I think it's more of the.
Yeah.
The the the.
I hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry, I'm 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 having a hard time for lunch. Uh uh it's more of the uh uh. Actually, the 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 doing, the fixing, the.
So like identify and improve.
Thank you. Maybe that's something like that.
Address, identify and address.
Or complete, do you already, you must already have facility goals because you have a long-range master plan or not? From the bond, you have some?
We do.
But this one speaks to equity to me really, really clearly.
Everybody's kind of, yeah.
We do, but then we also have Kennedy and Richmond.
Right, right, right.
We do, and we have a new bond that has not been included. Fully into our facilities.
So what what's important to the board to capture that? And you just said, Jamila, the equity piece too. I mean, obviously, facilities are important. How? What's a way to capture a broad goal?
I think whatever you do, you gotta take identify out. That's just kinda spitting in the wind. We know what the problems are, so we don't have to identify the elephant in the room anymore. What we need to do is figure out what to do with it. You know what I mean? What are we gonna do with, because we're a huge district. We we have fifty-four plus schools. Like, what are we gonna do? To make sure that every child's learning environment and every. Staff member's working environment is at a standard of functionality that this board is okay with.
You know. I think a lot of that stuff has to do with the individuals that's in those positions are not doing what they're supposed to do. And that's what it boils down to. They sit in the positions, but they ain't doing nothing. And.
So are you saying there are some goals that need to be completed that have already been set?
Yes, and I think there are other goals that need to be identified. I don't, I don't think. I don't think all the identification is done, but I understand what trustee Smithfold is saying. Um.
Maybe it's maybe it's identify, maintain and complete.
Yeah, that's good. Identify, maintain, complete.
Because I think we're talking about a few things in facilities, right? The the keeping up with the with the.
Correct.
Grass at the schools to completing large items, right, to.
Maintenance.
Developing the the, yeah, exactly. So I think that because it's so broad, that's why I had.
Critical, there's still critical needs projects, so.
Identify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think for this one, Dr. Hertz, there has to be, to trustee Christians, to president Christian's point. There has to be a high level of accountability that's attached with time, right? The time, it's. There has to be time measurements in this, right? So if you're putting in a work order in August and it's now October, then we're not hitting this goal, right? We're not doing it in a timely manner, right? So I think that, and that's getting a little bit into the weeds, but that's where my mind is going with this when we talk about. Equity, right? And when we talk about making sure that our facilities are in the conditions to serve. Right? That's big for me to make sure that our facilities are, and how quick are we able to? Be again proactive, right? Like we saw about with the heat wave and we saw now we know winter is upon us. Like, we know that these things are coming. How quick are we moving to the direction of? Not having to react with already be ready and prepared for, right? So I think where it says. Identify what trustee Gonzalez Ho said, the three qualifiers that he put on it. Again, underneath that, just be mindful of time.
That would be a great lag measure.
That's what I was gonna say. Those those two things would go under a lag measure.
You can measure so easily.
Proactive, timeliness, those are.
That's accountability then to.
Yeah.
To your point, number three, about those work orders are never getting done.
Just for clarification, I wanna understand the distinction between maintain and complete.
I think that the difference would be, and please add the other folks that. Um maintain is like the maintenance of our schools. Like, when we walk around the schools and grass has not been cut for six months, right, or when work orders have not been done, or when. A facility is falling apart and we should at least clean the mold.
Right, right.
Like, uh but complete is like the Pinal Valley High School project, right, that we. Are still approving work orders. I mean, we're not work orders, uh uh whatever they're called.
Change orders.
Change orders and it's taking longer, right? Or the Richmond High and Kennedy project, right, or the Lake project. That's what I mean, because that's a broader bond issue, right? But it's gonna still fit in this, in this area.
I understand.
Could you say something like identify and complete? Um you, maybe you don't need short and long range, but identify and complete capital facilities and maintenance goals? Or something like that, or facilities and maintenance goals? Because your capital projects come from your bond. You're talking about also maintenance.
Yeah.
Like deferred.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Does that capture?
Say that one more time.
Identify and complete. Just keep short and long range facility and maintenance schools. And maybe you don't need to have including grounds. I mean, that would be a subset which could essentially maybe even be a lag measure or a lead measure, conditions and grounds. And if you want, if the board prefers capital facility, you know, capital facility project goals or something like that. I don't know how you guys refer to it in your bond program.
I just don't think you need the word goal in your goal. Like you have, it is a goal, so you don't need the word goal in a goal. So if you wanna say, you know, stop facilities.
Could you say project, Jamila?
You could say projects. You could say something, just not goal in a goal.
So facilities and maintenance projects, okay? All right, so we have consensus there that that number five, which is gonna be not a number five anymore, but, right? Chris would, yeah.
No, no, go ahead.
Clarity, or you want?
Okay, I have six right now. I think we skipped over the communications because we was going to combine, um, four and six.
I think we have communication was established slash maintained. Channels of communication with board and stakeholders and then a subset of that was, you know, like in, embedded in a lead or lag measure would be the transparency part and the partners part and other things related to communications and being proactive, effective. So it's one goal, a communication goal, but lead and lag.
Okay, you know what I did? I skipped ahead, so it's gonna come out to be six overall.
Uh, that's what I have too, but I wanna make sure we're on the same page. So number five stays as a standalone goal related to facilities and maintenance projects. Number six becomes embedded in the communication goal.
Yep.
And what about number seven, safety plan? Last one?
So I have a question on this. So I always think of safety in terms of hard and soft measures. So hard is like the gate, the camera, the light, the, you know, like that kinda stuff. But then I also think of soft measures of safety, like you, like there's a culture piece here. Like do kids feel safe at school? So I'm wondering if that's addressed or if that, because that, that's very real. So we can have all the fences in the world and the one exits or the one entrances or whatever, but if kids still don't
Sure with you.
Feel safe in that environment, then all of that is for not. So my question on that is, you know, is there a soft, what I call like the softer side, your emotional safety and being of school?
No, 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 not yet. Let me find the document.
So like school climate really?
Yeah, there's, there's, to me, there's always a climate piece of this.
Kids feeling safe in their environment.
Right, right. And that, and it's separate. I mean, it's related to, but it's a, it's its own separate thing. You can, I mean, I can-
Bullying, the connectedness, all of that stuff that falls in that. That's one of your LCAP goal, doesn't that fall into one of the LCAP categories? School, maybe it's part of student engagement. I can't remember. It's the climate piece.
Well, there's like mental health.
Yeah, I'd have to go look it up.
There's like mental health and like-
Oh, I didn't.
Right, the social emotional. I, I'm just wondering if that, yeah.
So when you thought of that, were you thinking just the hard measures or?
Yeah, so, so this came from, from the team, so I know this, still trying to understand like the overarching goal and, you know, the lead and lag measures. So I, I do wanna share like an overarching goal with you from that.
Tell me when you're ready.
But Dr. Hertz, to trustee Reckler's point, I see number seven that can go directly into number five and number seven can go directly into number two. Because in number two is your emotional well-being, right? Is your emotional safety that you have. And number, and number five is your physical well-being, your physical safety that you have from the one point of entry or NCSSS is on campus or whatever it is. It's all kinda wrapped up in our facilities and how we create and maintain a space for kids. If you were looking to shorten the goals or to not have, I don't know shortened the goals, but to, if we're still in the idea of combining things, combining things, you know what I mean? Because I see it as a, a soft hard safety plan.
So you could just add the word safe in number two?
Yeah.
Caring, safe environment.
So I was gonna share with you, um, an overarching goal that could be used. You know, I'm always looking at resources and this is a resource from my previous district that we use. So it could be creating a school culture that promotes ongoing improvement of teaching and learning for students and staff. So that could be an overarching goal. And then we have our, instead of just saying, um, I think whatever he said, I think all the lag measures could be like a decrease in, you know, the number of incidences, uh, on the campus. The decrease in suspensions, referrals, expulsions, uh, those sorts of things. So just something to think about, I threw that out.
How does that sound?
But I, I mean, what did you just say though? Trustee Smith Folds as a overarching?
No, but, but trustee Gonzalez hoy said, I think, hit the nail on the head. If you add safe to number two, if you add the word safe into number two, then I think that that's gonna, and if you add safe into facilities, like if you add those, if you add the words into the goals, the overarching goal and number two and number, I guess it was number five, I think that that hits on number seven, right?
Part of the facility goal, there might be a lead and lag measure on, you know, this updated safety plan, the safety walks and those things. And then on part of-
Because that's something that we're already doing, right? You already have that in place as part of your safety plan is we have the safety plans that have to go to Booker, right? We have all of that. It's part of that, but that's part of the facility part, right? And number two, if you add the word safe, what you're doing is bringing in that social emotional safety that we're talking about, bringing in the health centers that we're talking about, bringing in that kids being able to use their agency about their, around their mental health. Because that's what we've been talking about over the last two years also.
You want me to share? I, I'm taking notes here. What did you want me to do, shift?
Yeah, yeah, so I could see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I, I wanted to just see what she was talking about, which was trustee Smith Folds. I just wanted to look at the, the verbiage again.
Oh, oh, you want me to share back?
Yes, ma'am. I'm a little visualized.
And this is trustee Gonzalez hoy's idea that I just support a hundred percent is adding safety to number two.
It's fine, you can take the care of it.
Uh-uh, so, I support your idea, sir.
And I, I wrote down in a caring comma safe environment. Is that in agreement? Okay.
But did we want caring? Because I thought-
Do we need caring?
I thought I had eliminated.
I think that trustee Gonzalez hoy, and you look at it, but where, there's a part in here where you could add the word safe, right? Ensure all students develop habits, behaviors that elevate voice, safety, agency and empowerment in an environment, in all environments, whatever it is, there's a space for that. Even if it's under league and lag, if you don't put it at the very top, there's a space that you can add the word safe in here, right?
I got it now.
Okay, so what's on the screen as number seven is going to be embedded with lead and lag measures into a priority goal around long range facilities and maintenance goals. And then also in the second goal that we see on the screen relative to a safe and caring environment, is that? Is that what we capture?
Yeah.
So we've eliminated-
I have six goals.
So that's what I'm, that's what I- Wow.
Fiscal solvency?
Trustee Recker has another.
Fiscal solvency?
Oh.
Oh, that one.
Uh, five. I only see five up there, bro. Six, which is trustee.
Okay, so.
We have a subset.
We have a subset under-
Same.
We have a subset of one that might be-
That might be a-
Oh, that's interesting.
A through G.
Got it, got it. Okay, nevermind. I did not count that.
So, but it may be combined in, into one.
Got it. So it might be, it might be six, okay.
This would become, um, three, ensuring habits and-
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, 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 I caught on.
Yeah.
So Dr. Hertz.
Yes, ma'am.
I would be remiss if I didn't bring up, if it's not gonna be a goal, I would like it to be embedded into all of your thinking about race and equity. Like if it's not gonna be a standalone goal, it needs to be, when I'm looking at league and lag and I'm looking at how your team is developing metrics and measures and all of that, I'm looking through the lens of race and equity, right? I'm just, we, it, we cannot have a genuine conversation about district goals if we don't include that and make it be very intentional and boldly spoken out loud. Do you know what I'm saying? Like we have to be able to, because it's in everything. And if it's not in everything, then I don't think that we're doing our job. So if it's not gonna be a standalone goal, I would like it to be seen and obviously seen in everything that you bring to us, in my opinion.
I have my little lens and I wrote race and equity, race and equity lens for all of them.
So trying to thread it through every goal instead of having it as a standalone, thread it in the facility goal in the empowering environment and safe environment. Even the academical of number one, the literacy and numeracy by third grade.
Everything's race and equity based. Like every single thing that we do in a system that was not built to serve everyone has to be race and equity based, right? We are, we are counteracting hundreds of years of discrimination buil-, built into the system. So we have to be focused on what are we building and what are we dismantling? What are we intentionally trying to spaces that, what intentional spaces are we trying to create to where everyone is successful? We have to stop looking through the lens of privilege. We just, it's not, we're not, it's not working in our district. Like we have to be able to look at all of those that we leave behind, not the very few that we serve. And I want that to be part of the intentionality behind all of your staff work and behind the work of the board. Who are we leaving behind and are we serving them? Who are we not reaching? That's the value question, right? And I would also like to see value run through the string of all of your goals, right? What value are we showing? What, how are we showing up? What value are we showing up? Especially when you go to retention and retaining quality teachers. Are, how are they feeling valued? All of this with our labor partners, how are we showing value? So all of this stuff is very, very important, but I have to say there's nothing more important to me than race and equity because it really is going to push us to where we need to go.
Can I just, uh, share something? I, I would say that it's, it's, it's easy to, to look at this through a, a lens of race and equity and weave it throughout. And I would say if we're truly looking through this, uh, through a race and equity lens, are we, are, aren't we showing value at the same time to our employees?
I think that you are. I think that, I think that value is just another one of those, value is another one of those, um, standards, right? Showing value is a standard, right? Being racially equitable is a standard, right? It is a, it is a value, but it's also a standard. So how are we showing? As a board member, we show value through our vote, right? Our vote is our value, right? We vote our values, we vote the values of our community. When we're setting up these goals, are, how are we setting them up to where your lead and your lag have value in it, right? They're showing the value of asking community surveys, right? That's showing value because I wanna know your opinion, right? Before we make, instead of making a decision for you, I'm making a decision with you, right? Shared decision-making is a value, right? Having, having good relationships with our labor partners is a value, right? Everybody can come to the table being their authentic self. All of that is a value. So, and all of that done through a race and equity lens is adding on top of that. Does that help a little bit or no?
It, it does, but it's, it's, it's harder. So, so one, considering the, the goals, six or seven goals and us kinda taking each of these goals and applying it through a race and equity lens, that's gonna be like work for the team. But then to on top of it, take it through an additional lens of value, that's gonna make it, uh, a little bit more time consuming. And then also, you know, when I think of like A through G and trying to apply a value lens, uh, to that piece, not that we can't do it, it's just gonna be, um, I guess what I'm asking for is like some flexibility. This, it's a lot of goals right now. Six or seven goals is a lot.
Seven, I think we have.
Yeah, six or seven, depending upon the A through G if it's a subset. So I would just ask, I appreciate the feedback, but at, at some point, I just wanna share with you that this is a lot to kinda go through.
Could I ask for a little clarity from trustee Smith Folds? Because I guess I don't understand the value piece. Because I think of value by us specifically choosing these things. We're showing value that we care about literacy and math for our students. Could you talk a little bit more about what you mean by value on measurable outcomes? Because I guess I-
So what I'm talking-
You embedded into our goal setting, so.
It's in there. What I'm asking for is just to make sure that when we're talking about these goals, when the superintendent is talking about these goals with his staff, that he's asking the question, are we showing value? How do we show value during this, right? So if you're talking about A to G credits, right? If you're talking about A to G credits, are we showing value to the master schedule, right? Are we showing value to teachers' time in this? Are we showing value to being able to, uh, being able to staff appropriately? Are we showing value to teachers' time and principals' time when we're saying that you have to have this done by X amount of days? Are we giving them the freedom to do that and the time to do that? When I'm talking about value is just how we, the standard we hold ourselves to, right? Like the, are, are we setting as a va-, a standard of valuing all of our employees? When we talk about any of this, right? You can get into the weeds of it. So like if I'm talking about, we heard this, uh, in the equity audit, right? The equity audit talked about, um, are we looking at a, do, does our master schedule match what we want our students to have on when they graduate, right? So are we saying we, we value A to G credits, but we're not valuing the time it takes to make that or to create that? And trustee Gonzalez, I don't know if I'm becoming more clear or more into the weeds with it, but if we say recruitment and retention, right? Are we valuing the teachers that we already have? And what does that value look like with those teachers? Is that compensation? Is that more time to collaborate with their colleagues? Is that something as simple as having a end of the year thank you brunch? I don't know what it is, but what I'm saying is, are we saying this and also putting the value behind it? Are we making those two things, are, are they tangible? Are they in agreement with each other? And not saying that value has to be one of the goals, but it should be when we're talking about the goal. We should be talking about value. Are we valuing what falls under this goal? Ensuring that all students develop habits and behavior. Are we vali-, val-, valuing student voice, right? Are we giving time for student voice? That's a value. That's a value question. If we're talking about identifying short and long range facility goals, are we valuing the fact that some of our students go to schools that have no windows? Are we understanding that? Are we talking about that? And are we putting resources to that? That's a value. Value comes in resources, people, money, um, asking questions. That's kinda where I'm going with that. And again, Dr. Hertz, it's one of those things that when you're talking about all of this, I think you should be talking about it through an equity lens, a racial lens and a value lens. That's just my personal opinion. Did that help at all, trustee Gonzalez hoy, or did it make it muddier?
No, it, it helped. I got, I mean, it, it, it helped. Thank you.
So I'll say I, I, I definitely understand, um, a little bit better. But I think what I would like to do is, uh, bring this back because it, it's really gonna be the conversations with my team, like the next steps. And we're kind of looking at the league and, uh, lead and lag and lead measures and bringing that back. Uh, but then adding, you know, the race and equity lens and the value lens as well. Uh, we'll bring that, um, to the conversation. I don't know how it's gonna play out. I'm, I'm thinking about some of these goals. I mean, I hear exactly what you're saying. How do we show that we value, uh, individuals to these goals? I hear what you're saying, but until we actually go through these activities, um, it could be, um, easy or it could be challenging on some of these. So that's what I- So that's what I, I, I guess I would say, and if we could go back and then bring it back to you and kind of get your thoughts on it. But I captured what you said, though.
How about if we take a five-minute break, um, Dr. Hurst? Because for closure, part of closure, we want to have, what are those next steps? I E. The superintendent will have a draft of this. So five-minute break and then.
We have enough eight, though.
Oh, we didn't do eight?
It's gonna be a kind of a longer.
Oh, is eight not part of HR?
Yeah, I put that.
Oh, I'm.
But I wanted to go a little deeper.
Okay, go ahead. Let's finish that then. Sorry. Go, do you want to go first and then let, Leslie?
No, go ahead and then I'll, I have some closing thoughts.
Got it. Yeah, I mean, if we make a like, something like, you know, like having an effective and positive human resources program, whatever we want to call it, it also, I want to include accountability of site leaders and district office. Um, so I, I.
I think that would be a lag measure.
That would be a lag measure. Okay, I just want to make sure. I know we're talking about not too many lags, but that one, it's going to be pretty lengthy, right? So I think that we have to be thoughtful. Recruitment is going to have probably a few measurable outcomes. I think the structures from within HR is going to have a few. The retention is going to have quite a few, right? Because that includes transparency and culture with labors. It includes culture with, with employees. It includes supports, right? So I'm a little nervous about eight, because we're going to look at a huge list and now you want to leave with a set number of potentially lag.
So, so I just want to clarify, we're not developing lag measures here.
Okay, okay.
So we're only developing overarching goals, but what I did do is I listened to like tidbits, like what you're saying about, uh, management um, as it pertains to HR, you know, recruitment, retention, that would be a lag measure there. But for overall HR, it would be some high-level goal around improving the functionality of HR or whatever that's going to be. And then I would have like, so we would bring back those things. So I don't think there's this expectation that we figure that out here. And even like what trustee Smith Folds was saying, um, I captured all of that. However, we're not deciding that here. We're just doing like the overarching goal. And then I take all of this back to the team and then come back with those lag measures and the measures. But I did capture that there are probably be several lag measures under there and then metrics as well.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, for sure.
But the lag and lead measures, that's what we're evaluating you on, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so when you go back to the team, they're going to tell you what basic, let me see if I just, see if I understand this. You're going to take what the big overarching goals here. You're going to go back to your staff. Your staff is going to then tell you what they can do, because that's what you're evaluating them on. You're going to bring that back to us, because then that's what you expect us to evaluate you on. And then we're going to add or delete from that list telling you, okay, well, this is what y'all said y'all can do, but this is our expectation, right? Where, so you need to back and add this to it, because this is what as a board, looking at the lag and lead, this is what we want. So if we add something like, and I'm making it up, we start the school year with no more than 50 openings or whatever, making it up. So that, and you didn't have that on there, but we're insisting on having that as a board, then you would then take that and say, okay, this is what they're insisting on me doing, so I need to put that pressure on. This is what y'all have to do. Is that, is that the ones, three of this whole process?
Yes, yes, absolutely. That is absolutely it.
We're accordi, this is like an accordion process. Go ahead, Leslie.
Okay, just before we break, fiscal solvency once again. And then also.
Can you elaborate on that overarching goal? Like, can you expand upon?
On fiscal.
What, what, what would you, would you just say improve? Would that be the overarching goal? Ensure.
Ensuring.
Ensuring fiscal solvency. Okay.
I mean, I'm certain, I'm sure there could be some improvement measures there.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, but to, to explore that. And you could do everything right in the world, world, and the board could vote down your budget, but at least you've done your part and I think.
Understand.
And shepherding, stewarding the, the district's money, you know, inside, inside the envelope in which we operate. Um, you know, making positive choices about where the funds are spent. Um, there is not much outside of, um, uh, salary and benefits, but you know, it, it is an important component of us being here in the future. Um, so I feel that's important. The other thing that you have, which nobody has mentioned, though, and I just want to make sure that eyes are on this, is the completion of a strategic plan. So that's something else that you're working on.
But we're not thinking about putting that as a goal.
Uh, well, you know.
Because it, it is, so can I just say this? Uh, again, there's several goals that we have already, um, as an executive team. But again, for evaluation, I just want to just caution us on like too many, many goals.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with you, but I want to make sure that this is on everybody's radar.
Yes.
Um, that this is out there. And there have been funds invested in bringing this to fruition and um, I feel it's important. Um, you know, there have been a lot of fire drills and maybe like it's not important today, but in the, in, you know, the grand scheme of things, having, having a, a plan is important. So I just want to make sure everybody in the room is uh, just remembers that that's out there and that's a massive lift. And then a couple of things I just wanted to give you on the sheets that you're working on with your direct reports. Um, I'm very interested in ground up, so I want to make sure that their feedback of the people that are in the roles are actively participating in that process. I think they are, but I just want to say it out loud.
Say that one more time. Who, who?
Uh, these are for your direct reports and the sheets that you showed us on how you're, how you're going and strategizing. It's very important to me that that's a ground-up process and the employee voice is really represented in that. I think it is, but I just want to say it out loud. I also think it should be collaborative, that, you know, some things come from the supervisor, but certainly people who are in the job. You know, they, you know, I, I like collaborative processes where we're meeting in the middle on um, how, how goals are put forward. And then, um, this is something that I'd hope that you'd consider bringing back from the, um, SPSA process, which is a resource inequity. Like, I always go to those first in the SPSAs, like, what are they missing? What do they need to do their jobs? And so in that process, I hope that if there are tools that they need, or there are resource inequities that they themselves are experiencing, that that is captured as well, so that, you know, we're, we're helping to support uh, the person in the chair doing the job.
And can I, is that the single plan for school? What's?
Yeah, so in our SPSAs, in our single plan for student achievements, we have a little box that says resource inequity.
Okay.
And they write down what they don't have.
I see.
Or what they need. And to me, that's like, you know, I'm like, I don't care about anything else in the plan. I'm like, what do they need? That's not true, but I read the whole plan, but, you know, for that, I'm really curious about what do they need? And then system-wide, you know, like, are there, are there commonalities here? So, you know, I think there's a lot of things that could get drawn with that. And I think it's true for employees, too. I need training in this, or I need, you know, like, whatever it is. I think it's helpful.
Well, and hopefully these goals will guide the SPSAs. I don't know when they're due, but I would assume they're working on them, like the single plans for school.
Yeah, yeah, we're done. We're, I think we're almost done.
Okay, so you might be a little lagged behind on these goals, you know, you may, and hopefully these are goals that you keep for two years. You know, the idea with the priority goals is you don't.
Yeah, well, to me, those are all evergreen, you know, those are perennial.
So can we take a five-minute, five-minute break and bring closure?
So, Ms. Lovely, I have a question. Are, are, are we all in need of a break? Can we power through? I don't want to be presumptuous. Do we all need a break? Because we end at four thirty.
Okay, I'm happy to power through. How, how does the rest of the team feel? All right, Jamila, you good?
Absolutely. I have the power to cut my camera off. So I have, I am, I am ready and to power through.
Okay, well, we, so this is the question. What's next? So we want to, as, you know, we leave today. So the superintendent and the board have some agreements on what comes next. So let's start with where we just ended. It's my understanding, superintendent, you're going to go back and and I'll work with you, Chris, on my notes to kind of summarize what we just did for this last hour and a half with here's priority goals that we believe.
Yeah, I'm actually trying to capture just the high-level goals.
High-level goals, that's all right now.
Only because I would, it would be helpful for me to make sure I have clarity of this room.
Okay.
So that's.
You're actually trying to type them in, you know, because mine is scribbled, so, okay. Um, and then, and then would we have a timeline for that? And then superintendent will start working on some success even lag measures to bring to the board by X board meeting day. What's the next step with these goals? I just want to make sure that what our commitments are, are consistent.
Maybe we do, the suggestion would be, please grant me if I'm wrong with me, will you bring the measurements to us at the first board meeting in November? That'll give you a month to create everything. In place, you're not giving up time?
Yeah, I mean, we can set that date and then I would just be in contact with you and President Christian. If it's going to take a little bit longer. I think the, the piece that it would take the, the longest would be the actual metric and getting the, um, like baseline data, um, and, and bringing that back. Um, I don't see actual lag measures taking a long time.
Because we actually don't want to take too long, because we're supposed to have already a January.
Right.
Uh, uh, January, checking up where you are.
Yeah, and they're spotted the part of the evaluation piece, so.
We do in December. It's like, how was the last month?
November is good.
Okay, good.
So the first board meeting in November, the superintendent will have a draft of these ankles. He's going to resummarize what they are, but he'll bring to the board potential lead and lag measures or success indicators that the board could give feedback on. It'll be an agenda item. Um, so concurrent to that, you have an evaluation timeline. Jamila brought that up. That would be due, um, which also includes, you know, having some preliminary goals to the board for the superintendent's evaluation. How does that?
Oh, we just did that there.
So are we in concurrence with the board that these eight goals or whatever it turns out to be will become the superintendent's goals? You still have to discuss a new instrument and, and whatnot, because this won't necessarily fit with your old routine. So when would that occur?
Well, it hasn't happened today, to be honest, because the thirtieth of September is Friday. So unless he sends it to us or through email, I mean, I think that we can probably finalize the goals right now, right? The language and the goals.
Is a board in concurrence with these goal? I mean, then what's going to have to happen separate is, um, you know, and I know the board didn't want to do a subcommittee, but the actual instrument that will be, you don't have to decide that today. But, you know, what is that evaluation? Instrument going to look like? Because you can't use the same instrument that you used before in the board page consensus with the superintendent. That instrument wasn't.
You'll have to remember the point.
And that, that's going to take time. That's going to take, you know, three-hour meeting of establishing that instrument.
I don't care if there are people who want to volunteer and work with you both to do that. I.
Do a subcommittee. I know, Jamila, you had said before, you you wanted that to be the full board. Would you be in agreement of working with the subcommittee to work with the superintendent and one other board member on what that instrument might look like?
Um, I think that I was slightly confused with the conversation that just happened. I thought what we just spent time on was what we're going to evaluate the superintendent on. And was I, was I off with that? So if, if I was on point with that, then the next step is to find the measurement tool to evaluate the superintendent. That's what you're asking for now. But those, what we just spent time on is what he's going to be evaluated on. Now we're trying to figure out what that evaluation will look like, whether it's a three sixty evaluation, whether it's uh, using the same matrix that we used last time, which it can't be, because we have specific goals now. That's what you're asking for now. I don't, I'm not opposed to a subcommittee forming and them, them working that out. I just think it needs to be back to the full board as soon as possible. Again, Friday is the thirtieth. So it's one of those things that this has to get rolling, because we don't want to, trustee Gonzalez Hoi, point, January's here. Like, you know, the district shuts down for two weeks in December, you know what I mean? Like, it's here very quickly. And if he's going to have a mid review, we need to give him something that he's going to be reviewed on in, in a tangible, honest way. I'm complete.
A suggestion?
Yes.
I, I would love if maybe trustee Smith Folds and trustee Reckler met with you, please, you're welcome to sit now, of course, but met with you and Dr. Hurst in October, came up with the tool, and then we were able to see the tool and the measurable outcomes and lags together in the first meet, meeting in November, we can approve it all. And then when Dr. Hurst has November, December, January to look at data on the measurements. Unless the two of you prefer not to do it, but I really don't want to do it. So, so I would, because we already have agenda settings and all these things, so, uh, maybe.
I don't mind coming, I don't mind, I don't mind being on that subcommittee at all. If we're able to meet via Zoom and get it done, Dr. Hurst, I'm willing to do that. I don't think it would take more than two meetings. But two very in-depth meetings to get it done, but I'm willing to be part of that subcommittee.
Trustee Reckler, are you? It's a template. We're looking at what template. The goals are now established. I think we know that there's eight goals. With the success indicator still to come, right? No.
Seven goals.
Seven, okay, good.
Thirty-seven.
Excuse me.
I have fifty-six.
Do not listen to trustee Reckler.
Plan correctly. It shouldn't take more than one meeting, right? Because the two of you might be able to do pre-work.
And we can come in with some samples. I know you have some samples that you've shared that you had before, trustee Hurst, you may, uh, superintendent Hurst, you may have some, you may have some ability that we, it, it's a template, you know, what instrument? The goals are going to be here. The success indicators are going to be here. But when the board evaluates, you're going to have new board members, potentially. And so the idea is to do this before, you know, new board members come and then they're like, why are we using this instrument? It should be established, I think, before the election, personally. Leslie?
So I have a technical question, which is, I don't believe we can meet together with you unless there's a vote to appoint a subcommittee to do this. Is that correct?
You can have a superintendent subcommittee. You cannot have a board subcommittee. You know what I'm saying?
And can he do that?
Advisory committee. Yeah, you can do that without agendizing.
It does not have to be agendized.
I did it all the time, but maybe I was, it's a superintendent subcommittee. So the superintendent would be forming a subcommittee. I'm not, you know, he's just, I don't need to be there either.
Are bylaw laws, Dr. Hurst, to do that? And as long as President Christian's okay with it, people representing the board, my understanding on the bylaw is that it can't move forward.
Okay.
And then we don't have to agendize it, so it's, um, trustee Smith Folds saying we can reduce our time to the fourth day instead of seven. Does that make sense? Jamila, are you hearing, were you hearing?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. We're just trying to establish, we're just trying to establish what the evaluation will look like. Are we doing points? Are we doing satisfactory, unsatisfactory, whatever? We're just trying to figure out what the rubric is going to look like that we are going to evaluate the superintendent on.
The template or where the rubric is, you know, what kind of rubric? Is there a rubric? Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we were doing correctly and weren't doing some backroom.
No, and, and then the whole board, you guys were bringing in to the board in close session, and you had agendized it in closed session under superintendent evaluation. So then you have it as the ability, you know. So you're still meeting your timeline, Dr. Hurst, by having your goals, your overall superintendent.
That will actually happen before we walk out of here.
Yes.
Yes.
And then everything else can happen.
And then the success indicators, will that, for that, those goals will be meshed into what you're developing with your team. Okay? Does that make sense?
Legal lag measures.
Yeah, leg and lag, or yours might differ than what staff's doing, you know, because yours might involve.
I just want to make sure we have the terminology.
Yeah, the public partnerships, for example, might be specific to you. You know, the communications piece, you might have some different goals lead and lag. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so trustee Smith Folds, we're in agreement. Subcommittee, superintendent subcommittee is going to be you and trustee Reckler. You're going to be the representatives. You're gonna be the representatives. It will be brought back, you know, a draft template will be brought back to the board in closed session. Um, I'm assuming in November, maybe that first, that same meeting in November, um, where the, where the goals on the public agenda are gonna happen, correct? Shoot for that, the first meeting in November for superintendent evaluation template. Dr. Hurst, does that work for you?
Yes.
You're, then you're back in alignment with your timelines and your contract? And still could do a mid-year.
Tell me that date again, say, say that date again.
Uh, January. Um, the first board meeting in November, I don't.
Just November 2nd. I thought it was gonna be November 9th, but it's November 2nd. So if it takes, if it was to take me a little bit longer, we could do November 16th, but it's the 2nd.
I have November the 2nd.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, then you still can do a mid-year update, I mean, by January 30th of 2023, a progress report to the goals. The subcommittee can talk about what that progress report might look like. Does that make sense? We're looking at template process. Okay. So those are two of the most important next steps, I believe. Anything else that we need to capture or agree to and? You, you will still have to work on your governance handbook and some of these, you know, agreements and those things where it happens. Does the board want to commit to anything else related to that? You know, I know you've got.
We're working on that, we are working on that.
So maybe wait until that's completed and then have another study session to, to review those.
Yeah, it's gonna take us a little bit, because we have to cancel our meeting this week.
No.
So we're not gonna meet until the end of October now. So, um, then we're gonna do a public hearing, then we're gonna come back to the board in an open session.
Okay.
And then we're gonna approve it. So we're looking at the handbook probably, probably December.
So.
Very, maybe end of November.
Okay.
I know.
Because a lot of these protocols, and they come in your governance circle here, you're working on. Over here in board tools and board responsibilities, those will have to be fleshed out, which will come with some of the meeting. You had some meeting agreements today, but that, so another governance session, study session around board roles responsibilities will be, um, scheduled after the handbook is done.
Yeah.
That makes more sense to me than doing it before the handbook and then, because you're revising the handbook. Dr. Hurst?
So I was just gonna ask if we can use the suggestion button. I just sent you, um, a Google Doc on the goals. And if you could use either the comment or suggestion feature, um, then I would appreciate it. So before we leave today, um, if we can do that.
So is everybody, should they go into their laptop right now? Um, so trustee Smith Folds, and what, and you did a shared Google Doc?
I did.
Or you can share the screen if you'd like.
Share the screen.
Yeah, can you, Dr. Hurst, I can take this off?
If anything is wrong, um, if I didn't capture the right essence, you can make your comments and suggestions.
Maybe it's just easier to tell you.
Yeah, so the, and the lag measures are the suggestions that I heard that aren't necessarily the goals, but I'm taking into consideration. I forgot to write here, um, lag measure would be considering EL, sped.
African American.
African American.
Can I ask you a question about the second line?
Uh-huh.
Improve A through G completion rates. That sounds very rigorous to me.
I, yeah, I didn't really, well, I didn't capture what, because it was just mentioned A through G, so.
Yeah.
That's for discussion for, for us, like, whatever we want, there is, is perfect.
Could we maybe allow Dr. Hurst to get input from his staff on number two?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
I think this should be a collaborative process almost here. I don't think it should be all.
Got you.
And the whole point for me with number two, kind of how it came about in my mind, is just, my point was, don't forget that we are an all-encompassing district when we talk about literacy and when we talk about numeracy, right? When we talk about, third grade is absolutely important, right? Third grade is crucial, it's data-driven, we know it. But my point was, in your lag and your lead, to don't forget those others. It's the, the, the other grades, right? The other people that we, we don't necessarily hone into or target. Does that make sense? That's what I was talking about. So it's not necessarily, it has to be a complete number two. It just has to be in the forefront of your thinking. When you're thinking about literacy and numeracy by third grade, also think about what happens when they're past third grade, right? We are building in the, we, we are building in these systems of making sure everyone is literate by third grade from now on, right? But what do we do with the ones that are already existing in the system? That's kind of what I was talking to, and your lead and lag, I was hoping would address that, right? So your, your lead and lag, when it talks about building the system, you are gonna look at our English language learners, our sped students and our African-American students. When you, when you talk about reaching that goal, you're thinking about them. Also, you're thinking about them and everybody else when you're talking about what we're doing now, the resources that are in place now. Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah, so I'm gonna go back to the team, and if we can, um, make that into, um, a lag measure and it falls under number one, I, I get you completely.
Yeah, number six, I think, was worded differently.
Okay.
Um, it was something like.
You had different qualifiers.
I just started working on this one.
Okay.
Uh, so it was identify, I just put in maintenance, the maintenance projects too, not only the facility.
It was a capital, capital project, capital, main, maintenance and capital projects or something.
And Demetra, you had different qualifiers besides identify. It was identify and.
Well, it was maintain, but then we moved, we moved the, the, we changed the language to identifying complete, short-term, short, long-range, facility, uh, it was like.
It was, um, identifying complete, short, long-range, capital facility project.
And maintenance projects?
Capital facility and maintenance project, so it was two separately, sorry about that. Capital facility.
And then I think that kind of, uh, included what we talked about earlier, trustee Smith Folds.
Okay.
Well, capital improvement, how do you refer to it in your bond? What, what's, makes more sense to you, capital facility or capital improvement project?
Um, I think that we refer to it as, I don't know, rebuilding, remodeling facilities in general? I don't know if we use the word capital.
You don't use, then if that isn't a word that makes sense, a lot of districts use that word. Do you want to just say facilities then and not capital?
Identifying complete, short-term, short, long-term.
Say short and long-term facility improvement and maintenance project or, or just facility? Because that could be bond money, you're building a new something from your bond money. Or it could be you're updating your multipurpose room at X school. Most of it comes from your bond.
Mm-hmm. And, and we're out in our developer fees and.
As long as the board and the superintendent, you know what you're talking about, right?
I think this is pretty accurate.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Got you.
Can you see the screen, Jamila?
I can, and number three, can you take away all those ands? Ensure all student development habit, behave, elevate voice, and, and like.
Voice comma, so number three.
Yeah.
Voice comma, I think that was what I needed.
Oh, trustee Gonzalez already has it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Voice comma, empowerment. Can we put and between agency and empowerment, or do we not need that?
You can put and there. What, ensure all students develop habits slash behaviors that elevate voice. Agency, elevate voice, elevate agency, and elevate empowerment in a safe environment, okay? You're missing a period, but okay.
I don't know, we had a period after any of them.
You don't, but you should, but, or unless you have, like, your goals with a semicolon, but you can take the period off trustee Gonzalez's way if you're gonna have a semicolon after your goal.
Just a reminder about Betty Reed Soskins' event tomorrow.
Oh.
What's the Betty Reed event?
It's, um, it's a birthday.
Yeah, so she's like doing a say it's her, right?
Yes, so, um, on behalf of Wisconsin, uh, um, we would like to invite you to join Betty Reed Soskins, as she celebrates her 101st birthday, which students at Betty Reed Soskins Middle School, uh, tomorrow. It will begin at 10 o'clock, 10:05. Until 10:35, Betty Reed Soskins is gonna visit classrooms. Then from 10:45 to 11, uh, Betty Reed Soskins table to hang out with students. At 11 o'clock, we're gonna sing Happy Birthday, give a cake. I'll be presenting, uh, some flow, art tour.
That's very nice. Dr. Hurst, can you forward that email?
Yes, ma'am.
And we know trustee Smith Folds can't, I guess she'll, she'll kill Betty.
I, I wore my sweatshirt today for Betty Reed, so, no, I won't, I won't be able to be there, but.
Please give her our best, I guess.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, what a morbid sense of humor, you made me laugh.
As soon as I said it, I was like, I shouldn't have said that.
So are we good with this? I want to build a German meeting at 4:30.
So everybody's good with those? So these, the ones in red or number six in the greenish color, we're, we're good, okay? So, so just to let you know, two may fold into number one.
Oh, okay, exactly.
Yeah, so it may end up being, uh, six goals, but as long as we have clarity on that.
But then, and fiscal solvency would be at standard.
That would be the, that would be the sixth.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have timelines, Dr. Hurst, we have next steps. Um, so give yourselves a pat on the back, you did a lot of heavy lifting today. Thank you so much for, for being here and, um, thank you, um.
Can we say what we will take away? Can we do a takeaway real quick?
Yes, let me, um, let me see if I can see if, um, the last question, I know it's blocked here. It says, what clarity did you gain today as a member of the governance team or, or trustee Smith Folds? Do you put, what are you taking away? So let's just do this as a whip, uh, around the room. Who wants to jump in there? Any clarity or something you're gonna take away? Anybody? Jamila, do you want to start?
Uh, I'm gonna take away that the onus of the board behavior is on the board. The board has to set a standard of behavior and we have to hold each other accountable to that. And I'm gonna take away that, um, silence is not an option. We have to be able to speak to each other about our behavior, so that's what I'm taking away.
Thank you. Who else wants to share? Clarity or takeaway? Leslie?
Well, I'm very glad to have clarity on goals. I think that was really good to set the path forward for the year. And I thought that was very productive, and I think there's some really heavy lifting that can take place. But I think that they're, that it's the right levers and you gotta start somewhere, so.
Yep.
I, I, I really appreciate the conversation overall on, on every topic, but I especially appreciate the, the clarity on the goals. Um, I, I think what I'm gonna be going, doing with my team is understanding that we have six goals. It's really important that I bring back realistic, realistic lag and lead measures. So even though that there's seven, six or seven goals, you're gonna see us have a detailed conversation about, uh, you know, what's really realistic. Um, and we have heard the, the term smart goals. I really want our team to think about, um, the metric component, because that's gonna be the key, bringing that back to you that's really realistic. I understand what you're saying, trustee Smith Folds, about pushing us, um, uh, but also I want to be very realistic as well in bringing back those metrics and why we picked these metrics and be able to explain that. Um, I also say another takeaway for me would be, um, that leadership is important on, on all levels. Um, myself as a superintendent, that I'm setting the standards and then, um, I'm really looking forward to, uh, the leadership from the board, especially in all these, you know, topics that we discussed this morning, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, Demetra or Othri?
Yeah, I, I definitely appreciated that clarity around our goals, which I think have to continuously be our north stars as we do this work. And for us to be able to achieve those goals, we have to bring our best self in these leadership positions. That includes our board meetings. Um, and, uh, even though we have a lot of individual priorities, in order to achieve any of them, it takes the collective, right? So I just really appreciate our time today.
Yeah, uh, we accomplished a lot, and now we just got to, you know, continue to march for, you know, in the, in the direction of accomplishing all the things we need to do. Um, so everything was cool.
Yeah.
And I just want to say you did some big work today, and thank you for the time. And this work takes time, and I understand that you all could be doing something else. So thank you for inviting me, and I feel like it is a continuation of the evaluation conversations and your commitment to the superintendent to bring clarity. Um, and so I see this as a series of workshops, you know, next steps will be what we talked about. Um, the work is not done, so thank you for doing such a really good job. And I'll capture that, I took pictures, but I'll type up some notes too from that, Dr. Hurst, so we can, when we do the governance, the next piece of governance. So thank you again, Jamila, for, um, for being with us, we really appreciate it. I know it's not fun to be homesick, but thank you.
You're welcome, everyone.
You just got it, Germans.
Oh, okay.
The German, and I have 428, it's my, I, or do you mind, I know, we're modern.
They can see us through there.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
I know. My bros though.
Our next board meeting is on the 5th.
The 5th.
And then just.
All right, um, we come to this point here, uh, we just finished the, uh, board retreat, and, uh, we're gonna be closing out, and our next board meeting will be October the 5th. And have a good day, take care.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Push hand on here, trustee.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Hurst, can you still hear me?
I can.
Uh, when they meet Betty, make sure everybody got a mask on tomorrow. Have extra masks available for when students come up to her table, that they just need to be respectful and just have a mask on, because she's 101.
Yes, ma'am. Will do.
Like trustee Gonzalez Hoy said, I don't want, you know, I don't want nobody to be the reason.
Okay, we got you.
All right, bye, everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye.
You're welcome. Bye.